They're all here to see everybody this morning.
Maybe.
You got three family, friends.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is officially six o'clock and we call to order the December meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners, and we welcome each one of you to join us tonight for various reasons. We will be swaying in our newly elected officials and we have some recognitions to do tonight. And we have our Soil and Water folks will be sworn in also to their new terms. And thank you all for joining us tonight, being a part of this. We are on social media tonight as we have been since the pandemic started, and that is certainly the case tonight, so we're in homes, we're being observed by those that choose to follow our meetings in that fashion. Just so you sort of know what our order is going to be tonight, we're doing our welcome, we're going to have our pledge of allegiance and our invocation, and we have some special recognitions to do tonight. And then we'll have our swearing in of the newly elected officials and the reorganization of this board. And then we're going to take a recess. So those of you that are here for the recognitions or the swearing ins or sort of see how the board is formed for another year, if you don't want to stay for the duration, you'll be able to leave. So we'll take about a five-minute recess when we get to that point in our agenda tonight. So again, we welcome you to this meeting. It is our last meeting of 2022. This year has really flown by and we won't be meeting in this fashion again until next year, but we'll take care of that when the time comes. So again, thank you for being here. Chaplain Bill Hatfield from the Randolph County Sheriff's Department will deliver our invocation tonight, and following our invocation, we will have our pledge of allegiance. So will you please stand?
Thank you. I want to quote a Bible verse. Actually, it's a couple of verses back to back. It's Proverbs, Chapter 3, verses 5 and 6. It says, "Trust in the Lord with all thine heart; lead not into your own understanding, but in all your ways acknowledge him, and he will direct your path." Boy, do we need the direction of the Lord in our lives individually and corporately, as a county, as a nation, more than ever before. We need Him to directly intervene, and that's what I want to pray. So let's pray together. Lord God, you said you would. You said you would lead us and guide us. You want us to do our part. That's to cry out to you. That's to trust that you're going to do that, Lord. And for all that goes on here tonight, the special recognitions, the swearing in, the reorganization, talks of finances, everything pertaining to Randolph County will affect people, will affect families, and God, we need you to move. So I'm asking for your direction tonight. I'm asking for your intervention tonight to guide these officials here, every decision that's made and everything that goes on from this point on, how it will affect our county. Thank you for the freedom we have. Thank you for this beautiful county, this beautiful country you've given us. My prayer is that we would turn our faces back towards God. We'd fall back on our faces and realize you're still the King of kings, you're still the Lord of lords, you're still a good God, and ultimately, no matter what's going on around us, you are still in control. Guide our people here tonight, Lord. We know you've placed them here, and we're just going to trust you with everything that happens here tonight, and in the precious name of Jesus I pray. And everyone said, amen.
Amen. Thank you, chap.
I pray that allegiance be unified of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have some special recognitions tonight as we often do at the start of our Commissioners' meetings, and this is one that, our first one tonight, is one that has been a part of my career here as a County Commissioner in Randolph County and working with the citizens. Deborah Hill, who's our Tax Administrator, was nominated and subsequently selected as the 2022 North Carolina Tax Assessor of the Year. And we want to recognize her tonight. We have a very detailed bio of Deborah and what she's done in her career here with the county, and I won't read it all, but I want to touch on some very, I think, important highlights and facts about her career. I know when I got started, the Chairman of the County Commissioners had to serve on the Board of Equalization and Review. That's a separate process now. Randolph was the only county that didn't sit under the Machine Re Act. So the County Commissioner Chair and one person from each of the political parties made up the Board of Equalization and Review. And it was the first revow in Randolph County where the values went from 50% to 100%. And it was a lengthy, contentious process. Deborah was here during that, but we have improved, I think, every year since that start. Deborah began as a list taker with the Tax Department back in 1982. In 1984, she became a full-time employee as a real estate appraiser. She became a state-certified residential appraiser in 1991 and would eventually become the head of the Real Estate Department of the Tax Department in July of 1994. In 2007, she accepted the appointment of interim administrator and assessor and tax collector for the county, and she obtained her certification as a county assessor in October of 2008. This past July, we appointed her to another four-year term as a tax administrator and assessor for Randolph County. She's loved the work of appraising, but that did not keep her from assuming the full-time role as a tax administrator. Purchasing, one of her highlights was a purchase, new billing and collecting software that replaced a 30-year-old legacy software program in the Tax Department. The software installation was completed in July of 2009, and installation of new software for the appraisal and mapping departments quickly followed that. Over the last 11 years in her tenure as our Tax Administrator, the Tax Department has maintained a 99.29% collection rate for property taxes in Randolph County. Best way to say that is doing what we can to make everybody pay their rightful share, their fair share based on their property values. The past two reevaluations have averaged an appeal rate of 3%. During that first one that I worked, we had over 1,200 appeals in that process that often led to 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning before we finished our work. Deborah and her husband Harold will celebrate 53 years of marriage in this month of December. They have two children and five grandchildren. This past January, this is personal with Deborah, this past January, Deborah was diagnosed with breast cancer. And through this year, through the nine months, she has gone through surgery, chemotherapy, and radiation. On her radiation, she left here at 3:00 in the afternoon, took her radiation, and came back to work. And in this whole year, going through that process, she's missed 25 days of work. And that says so much about the dedication that she has and commitment that she has to her job and to the citizens of this county. It was a privilege of some of us to write a letter to support Deborah's nomination for this position. And I want to read you some of the things that were included in that process. County Manager Johnson said she's a perfect example of our county slogan, "Serving with a heart," from the heart of North Carolina. She's hardworking and dedicated to ensuring that her staff provides excellent customer service and attention to our citizens. An excerpt from my letter said, "It is well-known that the Tax Department is the most scrutinized of all departments in county government. Her fair and humble treatment of all citizens has led to an excellent Tax Department and consistent public confidence." Tonya Price, who's worked there, says she has walked through many difficult situations in both her professional responsibilities as well as her personal challenges, but she never lost focus of the importance to keep moving forward for herself, her position in the county, and especially her staff. Johnny Bailey wrote, "I've had the opportunity to know her on a personal and professional basis, and she always exhibited a kind and compassionate demeanor while also presenting herself as a knowledgeable and competent county official." Now, this last one came from Deborah's daughter. She was the mom giving it 100% at the job, the dedicated employee who never wanted to call out, the employee who wasn't going to leave until the job was done. As a small child, I did not always understand this, but now, as I look back, she was always doing her best, giving her all and everything she's done. She has always taught us to put the Lord first, the importance of family, that being kind goes a long way, and how to be successful in your career. So won't you join me in the Board of Commissioners in recognizing Deborah Hill as the 2022 North Carolina Tax Assessor of the Year?
This is not a retirement party.
This is a cheap gift for all that you've done. But maybe you can frame it, and it is a recognition. It comes with much more appreciation for all that you've done on behalf of the county, the citizens here, and a very difficult job to handle, but you've done it well, and we thank you.
Thank you. And it was a great honor to be recognized by all my peers, and it's ironic that I started my career 40 years ago in the basement of this building as a 30-day temporary list taker, and I've not left. And I don't plan to leave anytime soon. So thank you so much.
We have one more that I'm going to do, and then Allison, you can come and do the presentations. It has been our practice here recent years to recognize those citizens of the county who have turned 100 years old. And this month, we recognize Louise Duncan Brewer. She was born December 3, 1922, so she just had a birthday last week to become 100 years old. She lives on 1142 Lowbridge Road in Ramseur. She was nominated, or this application was presented by her son, Ed Brewer. Some of the things that they mentioned about Louise was she's an avid gardener, raising fruits, vegetables, flowers. She has two sons, six grandchildren, and six great-grandchildren. Now, Louise could not be with us tonight, and I understand there's no one here from her family to represent her, but we will make sure that Louise gets this certificate recognizing her on her 100th birthday. So we thank you for that. And Allison, if you'd come to make your couple of presentations.
So tonight, we wanted to take a moment to recognize all of our 4Hers that have done so well in the livestock season. The fall is our busiest time for livestock shows, and we had 53 youth from Randolph County that raised turkeys and took them to the fair. And then we had about 25 other kids that were at the state fair, whether it be jams, jellies, science projects, livestock, beef cattle, goats, sheep, and dairy cattle. But we wanted to recognize Jonathan Scarlett tonight. He raised, I'm going to read it because I don't want to mess it up, marshmallow, his doe. She was the reserve supreme champion doe, and the reserve got to be NC doe at the NC State Fair. This was out of a total of 250 does there. No, she didn't. Thank y'all so much for the support of our mission.
Now, we are going to go through the practice, the process of swearing in our newly elected officials here in the county. That will include three of our Commissioners that were recently re-elected, David Allen, our Vice Chairman, Darrell Frye, our Chair, and Hope Haywood. And so Judge Jim Hill will be doing the honors, and we will take them in that order, David and myself, and then Hope. And then we're going to have the Soil and Water District Supervisors, William Bill Austin, Kerry Gaszalotsky, and Brian Ward. So we will start with the Commissioners first. David?
Be faithful.
Be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And I will endeavor.
To support, maintain, and defend.
To support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution and said state.
Constitution and said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, David L. Allen.
I, David L. Allen.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will and truly.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
A County Commissioner of Randolph County.
Of County Commissioner of Randolph County.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
This is my grandson, Peter Pope, and my son-in-law, Clay Pope, and this is my wife and daughter.
Sir, are you prepared to testify?
I am.
If you'd be kind enough, push the left hand of the father. Raise your right. Repeat after me. I, Darrell L. Frye.
I, Darrell L. Frye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As County Commissioner.
As County Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Darrell L. Frye.
I, Darrell L. Frye.
Do further.
Do further.
Solemnly and sincerely swear.
Solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Be faithful.
Be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And I will endeavor.
To support, maintain, and defend.
Support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution and said state.
The Constitution and said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Darrell L. Frye.
I, Darrell L. Frye.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will well and truly.
I will well and truly.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
A County Commissioner of Randolph County.
A County Commissioner of Randolph County.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my skill and ability.
Of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
She's got one.
She's got one.
Would you like to introduce your special guest?
I would. I'd like to introduce my son, Dr. John Haywood, and his wife, Dr. Jen Haywood. They are, of course, very special to me. I am very proud of them. I appreciate their support. This is particularly hard for me because it brings back a lot of memories of my late persons, so I appreciate them being here to stand with me. And I would like to thank them for bringing me my precious daughter with me.
Are you prepared to testify?
I am.
Raise your right. Please repeat after me. I, Hope Haywood.
I, Hope Haywood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office. the duties of my office,
as county commissioner.
as county commissioner.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I, Hope Haywood,
I, Hope Haywood,
do further,
do further,
solemnly and sincerely swear,
solemnly and sincerely swear,
that I will support,
that I will support,
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
be faithful,
be faithful,
and bear true allegiance.
and bear true allegiance.
to the state of North Carolina,
to the state of North Carolina,
and to the constitutional,
and to the constitutional,
powers and authorities,
powers and authorities,
which are or may be established,
which are or may be established,
for the government thereof.
for the government thereof.
and that I will endeavor,
and that I will endeavor,
to support, maintain, and defend,
to support, maintain, and defend,
the Constitution of said state.
the Constitution of said state.
not inconsistent with,
not inconsistent with,
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
to the best of my knowledge and ability.
to the best of my knowledge and ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I, Hope Haywood,
I, Hope Haywood,
do swear,
do swear,
that I will well and truly,
that I will well and truly,
execute the duties,
execute the duties,
of county commissioner of Randolph County.
of county commissioner of Randolph County.
according to the best of my skill and ability.
according to the best of my skill and ability.
according to law.
according to law.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Ready for... Bill?
How are you, sir?
Good.
Could you see?
Yeah, you can see. Not at all.
All right. Well, if you'd like to step over to the side. And if you're prepared to testify, I may hand it out. Raise your right hand and please repeat after me. If you please repeat after me. I, William T. Austin,
I, William T. Austin,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support and maintain,
that I will support and maintain,
the Constitution and laws,
the Constitution and laws,
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws,
and the Constitution and laws,
of North Carolina,
of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith.
not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will faithfully discharge,
and that I will faithfully discharge,
the duties of my office,
the duties of my office,
as soil and water supervisor.
as soil and water supervisor.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I, William T. Austin,
I, William T. Austin,
do further,
do further,
solemnly and sincerely swear,
solemnly and sincerely swear,
that I will support,
that I will support,
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
be faithful,
be faithful,
and bear true allegiance,
and bear true allegiance,
to the state of North Carolina,
to the state of North Carolina,
and to the constitutional powers,
and to the constitutional powers,
and authorities,
and authorities,
which are or may be established,
which are or may be established,
for the government thereof.
for the government thereof.
and that I will endeavor,
and that I will endeavor,
to support, maintain, and defend,
to support, maintain, and defend,
the Constitution of said state.
the Constitution of said state.
not inconsistent with,
not inconsistent with,
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
to the best of my knowledge and ability.
to the best of my knowledge and ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I, William T. Austin,
I, William T. Austin,
do swear,
do swear,
that I will well and truly,
that I will well and truly,
execute the duties,
execute the duties,
of soil and water supervisor.
of soil and water supervisor.
of Randolph County.
of Randolph County.
according to the best of my skill and ability.
according to the best of my skill and ability.
according to law.
according to law.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Carrie?
Would you like to introduce your special guest?
My husband, John Slatowski, my son, Aldrin, and my daughter, Arlana.
Are you prepared to testify?
Yes.
I, Carrie Gess Latsky,
I, Carrie Gess Latsky,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support and maintain,
that I will support and maintain,
the Constitution and laws,
the Constitution and laws,
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws,
and the Constitution and laws,
of North Carolina,
of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith.
not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will faithfully,
and that I will faithfully,
discharge the duties,
discharge the duties,
of my office,
of my office,
as soil and water supervisor.
as soil and water supervisor.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I, Carrie Gess Latsky,
I, Carrie Gess Latsky,
do further,
do further,
solemnly and sincerely swear,
solemnly and sincerely swear,
that I will support,
that I will support,
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
be faithful,
be faithful,
and bear true allegiance,
and bear true allegiance,
to the state of North Carolina,
to the state of North Carolina,
and to the constitutional powers,
and to the constitutional powers,
and authorities,
and authorities,
which are or may be established,
which are or may be established,
for the government thereof.
for the government thereof.
and that I will endeavor,
and that I will endeavor,
to support, maintain, and defend,
to support, maintain, and defend,
the Constitution of said state.
the Constitution of said state.
not inconsistent with,
not inconsistent with,
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
to the best of my knowledge and ability.
to the best of my knowledge and ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I, Carrie Gess Latsky,
I, Carrie Gess Latsky,
do swear,
do swear,
that I will well and truly,
that I will well and truly,
execute the duties,
execute the duties,
of soil and water supervisor.
of soil and water supervisor.
of Randolph County.
of Randolph County.
according to the best of my skill and ability.
according to my skill and ability.
according to law.
according to law.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Brian?
I, Brian Ward, do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support and maintain,
that I will support and maintain,
the Constitution and laws,
the Constitution and laws,
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws,
and the Constitution and laws,
of North Carolina,
of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith.
not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will faithfully,
and that I will faithfully,
discharge the duties of my office,
discharge the duties of my office,
as soil and water supervisor.
as soil and water supervisor.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I, Brian Ward,
I, Brian Ward,
do further,
do further,
solemnly and sincerely swear,
solemnly and sincerely swear,
that I will support,
that I will support,
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
be faithful,
be faithful,
and bear true allegiance,
and bear true allegiance,
to the state of North Carolina,
to the state of North Carolina,
and to the constitutional powers,
and to the constitutional powers,
and authorities,
and authorities,
which are or may be established,
which are or may be established,
for the government thereof.
for the government thereof.
and that I will endeavor,
and that I will endeavor,
to support, maintain, and defend,
to support, maintain, and defend,
the Constitution of said state.
the Constitution of said state.
not inconsistent with,
not inconsistent with,
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
to the best of my knowledge and ability.
to the best of my knowledge and ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I, Brian Ward,
I, Brian Ward,
do swear,
do swear,
that I will well and truly,
that I will well and truly,
execute the duties,
execute the duties,
of soil and water supervisor.
of soil and water supervisor.
of Randolph County.
of Randolph County.
according to the best,
according to the best,
of my skill and ability.
skill and ability.
according to law.
according to law.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I thank you very much for your privilege to announce your candidates.
Thank you, Judge Hill. Glad you could be with us. Thank you, sir. All right, so we have the swearing-ins taking place. The other procedure that comes with this meeting in December after the reorganization of our board is... The new members are seated. It is our responsibility to do the reorganization of the board. That process, there are about five of these that have to be taken individually. The rest can, at the pleasure of the board, be taken as a group if they so choose. For the purpose of electing a chairman, I will turn the meeting over to County Manager Hal Johnson at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each year in December, the board votes to reorganize the board for the coming year. The chairman and the vice-chairman must be done so in separate motions of the board. The first action is to elect the chairman of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners for the year 2023. Is there a motion to nominate a chairman for the upcoming year?
I'd like to make a motion to elect Daryl Frye as chairman for the upcoming year.
A motion has been made to elect Daryl Frye as chairman. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, sir. Second?
There is a second. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
And all opposed?
No.
One opposed, and it carries. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Hal. Thank the board for saying... Thank you, and thank the citizens. I thank you for re-electing me this year, giving me this opportunity. It's been... It's been, it's been an honor to serve the citizens of this county. I see Alan Pugh is sitting out here, and he's responsible for getting me started in this process. And I'm grateful to serve you, the citizens. I think that overall, our county is better today. Our job opportunities, our educational opportunities are special, especially have never been better. And that's what we can do, I think, best for our citizens, is to give you opportunities in life. I think the work ethic and the pride of citizens of this county are unmatched anywhere in this state. And you are a great group of people to represent, and an awesome responsibility that comes with that. And I'm glad to have that opportunity. So, it is now our opportunity to elect a vice-chairman. And I would make a motion to reappoint Commissioner David Allen as our vice-chair.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And Commissioner Allen, thank you. Our county attorney, Ben Morgan, has to be officially reappointed also. Is there a motion to reappoint Ben Morgan as our county attorney?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion's second. I will tell you, we, Ben is our board attorney. We have a staff attorney, Amy Scott, in here, who is an employee. Ben is actually not an employee of the county, but he is the attorney. And we've had various, including Mr. Pugh here, who's served in this position over the years. And I'm glad to have Ben here to guide us in an instant, to be a part of this process.
If I could have a moment, it's my pleasure to be here, and I am especially happy to see Mr. Pugh here. Mr. Chairman, you said that Mr. Pugh was responsible for getting you into this position. I would say that Mr. Pugh was responsible for me getting into this position and encouraging me, and has been a great source of encouragement over my career. I'm very happy he's here.
Thank you. Okay, our clerk to the board is Dana Crisco. Do I have a motion to reappoint?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, reappoint Dana Crisco. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And she is reappointed. Next is the deputy clerk to the board, Sarah Pack. Have a nomination?
So move.
Have a second? Second, I hear? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And these are appointed. Now, these other items are all the boards and commissions that various commissioners serve on. With one exception, we are changing the appointment to the Animal Services Advisory Board. As you know, that's the newest board and department here in the county, reporting directly to the county manager. And from the beginning of that, Commissioner Allen and I both served on that board. I think it's well, well-structured and well-founded now. I don't think it's necessary that both of us do that. And the recommendation is that Commissioner Allen would become a member of the Animal Services Advisory Board. So, I'm including that in these appointments. Unless there's a commissioner who does not want to continue in your current position, or I will accept a motion to approve these other boards and committee appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the appointments as presented with the addition of the amendment that you proposed there.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, everybody is pleased and love experiencing in these boards. And they, they are serious and important positions that each one performs. So, do I have, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So, we have completed our oaths of office. We have completed the reorganization of the board tonight. And we will be starting our regular December agenda. And with that, we're going to take a five-minute recess for those of you that might want to leave at this time. Thank all of you for being, be a part of it, whatever, whichever part was of your interest.
Thank you, John, for bringing that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. No. Congratulations. How you doing, Steve? Y'all been involved down in Moore County, ain't ya? Somebody told me that had to be a drag, a drag queen. Exactly what they should be.
Dana, what's more candy? Yes. Yes. It's a nut. You have a few personal things to say. See, I'm not putting myself in trouble because I don't have anybody to help me. Having, having a personal body. Sam, maybe you can do this. Sam. John, you know his brother David. Now, John played, you played ball with Brandon. Yeah, that's what I. And just, and I have to tell you, Sam, it's a big question. Alright, thanks again for coming and for bringing it back.
All right, thank, those of you who have remained for the remainder of our agenda tonight, we're going to move into that. The first thing is our public comment period, and you know, we've already been here close to an hour with the preliminary part of our agenda tonight was rather lengthy, talking with our attorney. We're going to hear first from, in the public comment, from those who are here to speak about an issue not related to the monument. And then we're going to have our fifteen-minute limit as the, as we normally do for those comments that are related to the monument in the order of the sign up. So with that, and please identify yourselves so that we can make notation on the list of the signees. So who is here tonight to speak to an issue not related to the monument? Allen?
Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Pugh is coming forward, I'll read the rules of procedure for the public comment period. The public comment period will be limited to fifteen minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name, both orally and in writing, before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, and speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Alan Pugh, but I would like the record to reflect that Deborah Hill is the granddaughter of my Aunt Berta, therefore I am the first cousin and once removed of Deborah Hill. You will be gratified to learn that I come to you tonight not with a complaint, but with an opportunity for this board to simply, easily, and inexpensively take action tonight. That will be of great benefit to hundreds of your fellow Randolph County citizens. We have a fine public library system in Randolph County, blessed with good leadership and a professional staff dedicated to customer service. Unfortunately, many of our people cannot take advantage of our libraries and all they have to offer, because unlike their neighbors in Guilford, Chatham, and even Little Montgomery County, they cannot go to the library on Sunday afternoon. After church on Sunday, we can go out to lunch or visit relatives and friends, or go to the movies, or to the mall, or watch sports on TV, or take a nap, but we can't go to the public library. Only Franklinville Library, the oldest and smallest in our county libraries, is open on Sunday afternoon. The librarian at Franklinville says that their library is used by patrons as much on Sunday as on an hourly basis as the rest of the week. All of the other libraries open at nine AM on Monday through Saturday and close at different hours, and do not open on Sunday afternoon. Only retired or part-time employees, or students, or students on vacation can make use of our public libraries during the bulk of their hours of operation. Fully employed folks have very limited occasion to spend time at the library. Moreover, this means that they, often their children don't have the opportunity to be brought to the library. I recently went to the library at Ashboro at nine AM in the morning when they opened, and stayed from nine until ten AM. I counted twenty people that came in the library. Five came in to use the bathroom and left. And several came in to put their books, delivered the books, and left, and the rest appeared to be, like me, of an age of a senior status and retired. And not only would this be a place to study and read and check out books on Sunday, remember that our libraries have public access to computers and the internet and all the educational and vocational benefit that can have to our citizens who are not able to afford their own. Now, I brought this idea up over a year ago to one of the commissioners and to our public county librarian. I followed up several times, and I was told variously that government change takes times. We will wait till some literary committee reports, and that Sunday openings would require more staff. Now, my sense was not one that there was opposition, but that there was inertia. I know it's tough to work on.
Mr. Pugh, that, that's your time, sir.
Well, anyway, it is high on my priority list, and I hope this board tonight will direct the county manager to ask the county librarian to recommend to this board alternatives for Sunday library openings at your January meeting, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh.
Did I see another hand a while ago?
Good evening. I'm here again. We have, I would like to echo what he's, what he's saying. My mother was a librarian at Franklinville for many years.
Sir, can you please take your full name for us?
Oh, I am Tim Saunders.
That's okay, Mr. Saunders.
Fourteen oh two East Aldrich Street.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders.
Ashboro. As I was saying, my mother was librarian at Franklinville. I grew up in the library, and some of the fondest memories that I have. Having said that, I want to mention that we have just come through another election season. Thank God we get our TVs back. I would like to express my appreciation for the ladies that work at the Board of Elections. They do a supreme job under some really trying conditions. We need people to come and work, be poll workers. I'm almost eighty years old. I worked early voting. I worked Election Day. At eighty years old, that's a struggle. I will probably not work another election. Because I need to take a nap. And, and it's, that's sort of frowned on. The second thing I would like to mention is the hostility among a lot of people in politics. I had sat down this afternoon with Rick Smith. If Rick and I can talk politics and not come to blows, anybody can. We need to sit down and talk to people of the other party. We're not each other's enemies. We're each other's opposition. I don't think all Republicans are crazy. I'm sure a few Republicans think I'm crazy, but that's okay. I will identify with that. But we need both parties, and we certainly need people to get along, because there are a lot of things in this community that needs everybody's attention. And, you know, we only have one country, one nation, one world. If we don't do what we need to do to make sure that it survives, it's on us. Our children won't have to worry about a lot of stuff because it won't be available. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. Thank you.
Would y'all, would y'all get a little step here?
There's a, there's a ramp. A ramp over there.
My name's Lester Rivenberg. First of all, I'd like to tell y'all I appreciate everything y'all do for the county, everything y'all do to make this county a better place. If y'all remember, one year ago, in this meeting, we took a stand for life, and we said Randolph County will stand for life. Well, tonight, Randolph County is asking for us to take a stand against drugs. One thing that I think everybody in this room can agree on is we have too many drugs in this county and on our streets. And back earlier this year, the North Carolina Senate passed a bill that would legalize medical marijuana in the state. That bill is now, has to go in front of the House, and is on its way to the House. What I've given, I've given each of y'all a couple pieces of paper. This is a draft ordinance that would ban the cultivation, the manufacturing, and the distribution of medical and recreational marijuana in this county. Y'all might think that this is something that, well, it's not done yet, so why are we talking about it? Well, this is something I believe we need to have in place before it gets passed. This would be something that's a lot like the trigger laws that a lot of states have for abortion. So as soon as it gets passed, Randolph County would have something that says, it's not coming here. It's not coming Randolph County. We're going to keep Randolph County safe. We're going to stand up for our kids. We're going to stand up for our grandkids, and we don't want more drugs legalized here. Okay? Colorado, one of the more progressive states that we have, almost two-thirds of the counties in Colorado have banned marijuana recreationally and medically. They do not allow it, do not allow it to be grown, distributed, or manufactured in the counties. So this is not a far-right thing. This is something that is, is very in the middle. It can be done, but it's right. It's what's right for the county. It's what's right for our families, and it's what's right to keep this county going in the right direction, to keep families to want to come here, to have families want to raise their kids here. So I appreciate y'all looking at this. This is a draft. If you have any questions or have any further input, please let me know. I would be willing to help all of y'all out with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lester.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, good evening. I'm Deanna Hurley Chamberlain. I'm the treasurer of New Hope.
Your name, your name, please?
Deanna Hurley Chamberlain.
Thank you.
I'm the treasurer of New Hope Volunteer Fire Department, and on behalf of the board and the firefighters, we want to give a much bit of gratitude to you and the efforts of Senator Craven in your recent allocation to sponsor the community grants. The county proposed budget for us is at ninety-nine percent collection rate, only a hundred and nine thousand dollars annually. An award of the ten thousand dollars non-restricted community funds is significant to our operations in our efforts to best serve our community. And again, our thanks to you in your efforts to coordinate this. We think that you do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Anyone else? All right. We know, we're going to take one person who is, would like to see the statue moved, and then take one who supports where it is. So who signed up first?
Duane Roberts. Duane Roberts is the first name on our list.
We're going to take someone who, who wants to have it moved first, Duane McDwyane. Mr. Faust, did you sign up?
I did.
Come ahead.
I signed up. I don't know if I was first.
Come ahead.
Come on up.
My name is Tammy Coley. A resolution from the Ashboro Circuit of the Western North Carolina Conference of the United Methodist Church. Whereas the Confederate monument was erected in nineteen eleven by the United Daughters of the Confederacy and sits in front of the courthouse and is dedicated to Randolph County Confederate soldiers. And whereas some county business is still handled in the building, including county commissioners' meetings. And whereas we oppose symbols commonly associated with white supremacy, like the Confederate battle flag and other Confederate symbols, as they do not represent the values of a holy, just, equitable, and beloved community. And whereas the argument that these monuments are simply a part of some people's heritage is actually a reminder and legacy of the shame, hate, intimidation, and degradation of a whole people. And whereas these monuments are memorials to efforts that sought to perpetuate a system of slavery that has been the most cruel, horrific, and brutal in the history of the world. And whereas our country and society continue to struggle with the lingering effects of slavery and of white supremacy, particularly across the southern U.S. And whereas most monuments to the Confederacy were erected during the Jim Crow era, and the historical record is clear that the monuments and the groups behind them had the purpose of promoting and maintaining white supremacy in a white southern society that was institutionally, legally, and economically built around white supremacy and black subjugation. Whereas our own Methodist tradition had its own struggles with slavery and racism dividing over the issue of slavery in eighteen forty, our history also includes actively and passively honoring and tolerating Confederate monuments. In doing so, the. In doing so, the church helped perpetuate a deep societal wrong and brokeness. They also failed to clearly and boldly live and proclaim the gospel message that Christ has opened the church to people of all ages, nations, and races. And whereas our United Methodist Church still has miles and miles to go in embodying Christ's ministry of reconciliation, justice, and peace. And whereas as Christians, we must always speak out and resist not only the present and historical wrongs, but also the symbols which glorify them. And whereas the Ashboro City Council has asked for the removal of this monument and we support their call, therefore be it resolved. We call on all of our Randolph County Commissioners for deep reflective prayer and repentance to seek equity, racial healing, and understanding, and to love one another. And be it further resolved that the Ashboro Circuit of the Western North Carolina Conference calls on the Randolph County Commissioners to remove the Confederate monument in Ashboro, North Carolina. And be it further resolved that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. reminded us that the arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice. There are times when we are called upon to make the arc swerve. This is one of those moments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Coley, do you want to leave the ordinance that proposed? Or do you want to leave that with the clerk so we'll have a copy of it?
I sure will, but not my messed up one. But I was something to get you one.
Just get us one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dwayne?
Dwayne Roberts, and good evening. I'd like to humbly ask to relinquish my three minutes to Mr. Kenny Ramsey. He's the North Carolina Lieutenant Division of Sons Confederate Veterans. He's driven two and a half hours to be here tonight.
Thank you.
What's your last name again, Kenny?
Okay, my name's Kenny Ramsey, R-A-M-S-E-Y. Drove up from Pender County. As Mr. Roberts stated, I am the Lieutenant Commander of the North Carolina Division of the Sons Confederate Veterans. I am also on the National General Executive Council of the SCV, where in North Carolina, we've got over 3,000 members. Nationally, we've got over 35,000. On the 22nd, the day before Thanksgiving, I got information that your monument here had been vandalized with spray paint. I immediately, in just a few minutes, called our local camp commander, Dwayne, and he gave me some information on it and I followed up. It bothered me a lot that it got damaged, but what really impressed me was the fact that the county had it cleaned up within just very few hours. It didn't get set, didn't get to stay public all damaged. I came to thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the quick action on that and also on your action in following the state law, which says it should stay, not falling into the minority who want to change or erase history. That nobody can actually change. They just want to hide it. And that's just not correct. And I don't have a whole lot to say. I'm not an orator. I don't get up and speak much. I didn't write any kind of a speech. I do know that your monument was put up in 1911, which was exactly on the 50th anniversary of the beginning of the war. Almost all the timeframe for monuments all over the South was 1911 to 1915, which they were celebrating the 50th anniversary. And at that time, there were still quite a few Confederate veterans still living and wanted to commemorate their fallen comrades. They weren't interested in anything else, just memorable moments for them. Most of these are, and to them, to these old veterans, they were tombstones of their fallen comrades that were buried on a battlefield and have no marker anywhere. I'm going to keep it short because you've got a lot of people back here, but you've got the state law, which you are following. But there is one other law that a lot of people don't remember, and I'm going to quote some straight from the King James Version of the Bible, Proverbs 22:28, "Remove not the ancient landmarks which thy fathers have set." That's a higher law than even the state law. Thank you.
Is there another one against? Or wants to, would like to see it moved?
Good evening. My name is Charlie P. Lyons, lay leader of First United Methodist Church, here to read a resolution passed by our church council on October 25, 2022. I do have copies, but I'm going to hobble, so hopefully you don't count those as cases. First United Methodist was established in 1843 and has sat proudly in the center of our community, just across the street from the courthouse, for just shy of 180 years. The Methodist Church was, in fact, the original owner of the Old City Cemetery before granting the land to Ashboro. Our church is made up of proud, active Randolph County citizens and leaders, young and old, established and new, rich and poor, black, brown, and white. We pray, we pray, this resolution and the growing number of Christian organizations across denominations will open your heart to the possibilities of real conversation and resolution. Week two of Advent reminds us of the hope created in the imagery of Isaiah 11:6. The wolf will live with the lamb. The leopard will lie down with the goat. The calf and the lion and the yearling together, and a little child will lead them. All is possible in God's authority, including the diverse opinions and ideas of Randolph County citizens reaching a peaceful consensus on this issue. Now I'll begin the resolution. Whereas in the city of Ashboro, on public property owned by the county of Randolph and a prominent location on the grounds of the Randolph County Courthouse property, a statue of a Confederate soldier was erected in 1909, dedicated to our Confederate heroes in 1911, and still in 2022 stands as a monument to the Confederacy. And whereas on September 8, 2022, the Ashboro City Council unanimously passed a resolution to relocate the statue from its location on the grounds of the Randolph County Courthouse property to some other respectable location. And whereas the Randolph County chapter of the NAACP has brought it to the attention of the county commissioners that Randolph County should be known as an inclusive community, that the NAACP is not interested in destroying the monument, but that the monument should not stay where it is. And whereas remembering the words of the prophet Micah, "What does the Lord require of you but to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with your God?" And whereas as members of the United Methodist Church, we are called on as congregation for deep reflective prayer and repentance to seek equity, racial healing, and understanding, and to love one another. And I'm probably out of my time, but I would like Ann Hoover, one of our other longtime members, to take three minutes to finish the resolution.
Thank you, gentlemen. I am Ann Hoover, and hope I'm...
Can you pull the mic down, please?
Resolution.
Ma'am, can you pull the mic down, please?
Okay. The resolution continues. Whereas monuments dedicated to Confederate heroes are to a significant number of Randolph County citizens, offensive and painful reminders of the legacy of racism, slavery, and racial inequality in our country. And whereas our county, our country continues to struggle with the lingering effects of racism, slavery, and racial inequality. And we affirm that it is time for the statue to be relocated from the public square. And whereas we grant that our own Methodist tradition had its struggles with slavery and racism, dividing over the issue of slavery in 1840. Our own history includes actively and passively tolerating, if not honoring, Confederate monuments. We acknowledge that we must clearly and unapologetically proclaim the gospel message that Christ has opened the church to people of all ages, nations, and races. And as Christians, we must always resist, in the strongest terms, all present and historical wrongs and any symbol which glorifies them. And whereas we desire pathways to peace and believe as United Methodist Christians that the time has come to relocate this statue in order to resolve this issue and promote community healing. Now, therefore, to accomplish these goals, it is resolved as fathers that we support the resolution passed by the Ashboro City Council on September 8, 2022. And we ask that the elected commissioners of Randolph County create a committee to investigate the options which the county has to find a place where the statue of the Confederate soldier, the monument, and pedestal upon which it stands, as presently located on the grounds of the Randolph County Courthouse property, can be relocated. And that a date be set for the committee to present its report to the commissioners. And that after receiving the report, the commissioners take action to relocate the statue and monument so that it will be moved to some other respectable location, such as private property rather than public property, or placed in an appropriate cemetery, museum, or park, and displayed in a historical context, along with other monuments, to Randolph County citizens. And that appropriate action be taken by the Randolph County Commissioners to carry out these goals as expediently as is reasonable. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. reminded us that the arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice. There are times when we are called upon to make the arc swerve. This is one of those times, gentlemen. This is the 25th day of October 2022. First United Methodist Church, Ashboro, North Carolina. Thank you.
Other side?
Thank you. I'm Eli Harmon of Ashboro.
Say it again.
Eli Harmon of Ashboro. Many of those who have advocated the statue's removal have cast themselves as vanguards of historical inevitability and evidently see themselves as proponents of an ideology and values they expect to continue expanding indefinitely until they ultimately dominate and devour the whole nation. This is a Whig or Bolshevik view of history that it's progressing linearly towards some more or less perfect end state, represented in most accounts by whoever's doing the telling. But is this really what's happening? While leftist values and ideologies have indeed become more and more entrenched, more and more visibly in various institutions, especially in recent years, it is by no means inevitable that someplace like Randolph County should succumb to the same contagious moral and ideological rot as has taken hold in more populous and urbanized areas. Randolph County actually became more conservative between 2016 and 2020 and has been getting steadily more conservative for decades. And this trend is echoed in many other counties nationwide. According to data published by the New York Times, the percentage of voters currently residing in landslide counties, that's counties that went for one party over another by 20 percentage points or more, has grown dramatically in the last 30 years, from 38% of all voters in 1992 to 59% in 2016. And nearly all of this growth has occurred in conservative landslide counties, which have nearly quadrupled in number and more than tripled in relative population, from 10% of voters in 1992 to 31% of all voters in 2016. Meanwhile, the number of liberal leftist landslide counties has actually fallen. And their relative share of voters has only gone up by a few percentage points, from 22% to 28% of the voting population over the same time period. So while many lament the increasing polarization of American political life, it may actually be evidence that the American system is working as intended. You know, they can have things the way they want them in their areas and we can have things the way we want in ours. Federalism is a longstanding and cherished American value. The problem is just that they don't want to respect the principles of federalism or any other longstanding American principles, but instead impose their values, preferences, and ideologies everywhere on everyone. But in the end, they're going to fail, just as Soviet communism failed. And the real America will still be here in Randolph County and thousands of other counties like this one, ready to pick up the pieces and start rebuilding. Thank you.
That completes our 15 minutes. Probably went over. We've heard from both sides and we'll be back next month. So I've said before, the board's voted, but this process is... We need some time. So let's be careful in our comments. And it is up to this board and that's the process we'll go through. All right, our consent agenda. Is there anyone on there that you'd like to pull out or you have a question about? I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. First is our Public Health Dental Services update. Tara?
Good evening, you all. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all this evening and I'm here to share just an update of what changes are coming to our dental clinic. In just a few minutes, I will ask Dr. Bill Donigan, he's chief dental officer with Contegra Family Dental, to join me and share a little bit from his perspective. As you all know, the health department has provided much-needed dental services for many, many years. I actually don't know how long, but I was thinking back today. If you all remember, her last name has escaped me. Beth Thomas. She retired as a dental hygienist three years ago and she had been in the dental clinic for 42 years. So y'all, we've been doing dental clinic for a long time, for kids ages zero to 18. Probably for the last six or eight years, we've had difficulty finding full-time dentists. There's just not enough dentists to go around and the public health department has a really hard time recruiting and retaining a dentist because we just can't compete with private practice. So probably six, seven years ago, we resorted to contracting with a dentist that was coming a couple of times a week. But that just wasn't keeping up with the demand for the dental services that we needed. In Susan Hayes' time, she was able to create a full-time dentist position again and we hired a dentist. Did a great job. After a couple of years, she moved on to private practice. We hired yet another dentist. And in March of this year, she announced her departure to return to school to further her education. So y'all, we posted the vacancy back in March and we're now in December and we've not had one application. We've posted it everywhere that we could think to post it. So that being the case, we were looking at having to close our dental clinic or potentially enter into a partnership with Confederate... enter into a partnership with Contegra Family Dental to help keep our dental clinic open. So we entered into discussion with Contegra, Dr. Donigan and I, back in August of this year, and our plans are for Contegra Family Dental, which is part of a federally qualified health center, which you guys know Mercy is a federally qualified health center. And they will be coming into our Health Department, and they will be taking over our dental clinic, providing staff, providing equipment to continue the services that are needed here in the county. Prior to our most recent dentist leaving, our dental folks applied for and were awarded a $375,000 grant. The intent for those grant funds were to implement a school-based oral health program. Up until this point, what we've been doing going into schools is providing screenings and education. This grant was going to allow us to take dental equipment on-site into schools and provide preventive health services, cleanings, x-rays, fluoride, sealants, those kinds of things. And anything that was needed beyond that, we would either do teledentistry and refer students out for further services elsewhere or back to the Health Department. Well, we still have those grant funds. So as part of the transition and partnership with Contegra, Contegra will assume those $375,000 grant funds, and they will move forward with implementing that school-based oral health program. So they will have a mobile dental unit, and Dr. Donigan, I won't steal all of his thunder, he will elaborate a little bit more on that mobile dental unit, but kids will be able to go right onto this bus and get the services right on that bus in the parking lot of the school. The plan will be to start with eight schools, eight of the schools in the county that have the highest free and reduced lunches, with the goal of expanding to all elementary schools and even into middle schools over time. Again, we felt strongly about moving forward with this partnership just to ensure that we can continue providing the services because the Health Department is one of the few clinics, dental clinics that accepts Medicaid. Plus, we have to have a good payer mix, but we do also see some clients that are uninsured because they won't be able to get the services elsewhere. So at this point, I'm going to shift it over to Dr. Donigan, he will share his perspective, and then at the conclusion of his speech, we will be open for questions.
Thank you, Tara. Hello. Thank you for letting me be here this evening. I need to find this, I think. Tara spoke one thing, the key is partnership. That's what we have talked about since last August. Contegra is the largest federally qualified health center in the state of North Carolina. Our dental program last year saw 35,000 patient visits. It's grown. Our school-based program is the largest in the state. Last year, with two mobile units, we saw nearly 6,000 children in the schools utilizing teledentistry to move those patients that needed care to our brick-and-mortar sites. We have seven fixed brick-and-mortar sites, and now we've added a third mobile dental unit, and Tara talked about it, we just purchased for Randolph County a three-chair mobile dental unit because we want to get into those schools where we can help reach that. Our purpose, I don't know what I'm doing here. No, that turned it off. I'm terrible with these things.
Right.
There we go. The purpose of the whole partnership is to serve the people of Randolph County. We also want to develop that school-based program. We already did a Duke Endowment grant, much like Tara was talking about, and now we are completing ours in what we've done in those 6,000 children. But our numbers now, after COVID's ending, are continuing to go up, and we added a new mobile unit over in Davie and Davidson County. So tell you a little history about Contegra. Contegra was begun in 1996, and it was a partnership between the county and the hospital. And that's actually what brought me here in 2007, because I said if two entities like the county and the hospital system can actually work together, that's a strong partnership and collaboration. And so we've continued to work in collaboration with other counties. Catawba County is part of our system now. They no longer have a county dental clinic, they're part of Contegra. Davie County, we're working over in Davie County the same way. We've added free and charitable care, which was Davidson Medical Ministries, and Lincoln Dental Services. Right now, we have seven, as I said, we have seven brick-and-mortar and three mobile units, and the fourth mobile unit is now being rewrapped and reworked a little bit to be ready to be here. We're in 10 counties already, and Randolph County will be our 11th. This is our payer mix, and I always tell people that in dental, most of what we do is try and reach a balance that creates sustainability. We're not trying to make millions of dollars, we're trying to break even. To do that, and mission-wise, to treat the uninsured and underinsured, children in our programs don't pay anything on the buses, whether they're insured or whether they're uninsured. We have an agreement with the state to bill Medicaid. They're the only ones who actually, and we do not have any bills go out to parents. So the children get what they need. This program that Duke had allowed for eight schools the first year and 14, 14 more, wasn't it, Tara? The second year. Our plan is to reach those eight schools this spring, and then next year be able to reach all 22. This is kind of the whole thing. We, the Health Department, if you've ever been there, has two dental chairs. It has space for a third one. Contegra has already ordered the equipment to start it with three chairs. I do consulting across the country, and one of the things I always say is, two chairs, you might get close to sustainability, might. The third chair is what you need to be sustainable. So we're going to add that third chair immediately, as soon as we can have the contract drawn up and completed. We have to combine the softwares. We both use Dentrix Enterprise, but man, I don't know if any of you guys know much about computers, but that is not an easy task, putting those pieces together. You know that there's a new site being, there's some changes going on over at Public Health. Tara and I have worked with the people from Henry Schein to change from a two-chair clinic to a five-chair clinic. Contegra will do all the supplies as well as the maintenance and as well as staffing and everything else on the operations side. We'll manage the day-to-day, and I'll report annually to you like I do in, matter of fact, I have to be in Catawba County next week to report to them what we've done in Catawba County. So we will come here annually to tell you how it's going, and we feel that that's probably the best we can do to keep you guys informed, and you should know. That's that new mobile dental unit. 38 feet long, three dental chairs, laboratory, digital x-rays, everything that's done at your dentist's office can be done right there, and that can be right outside the schools. And that's what we do. During COVID, when everyone else in all the small programs brought equipment into the schools, they had to cease. Because we were outside the school in these mobile units, we continued. In the COVID environment, we still saw about 4,000 children. So it's a pretty unique thing. That'll have a different logo and everything on the outside, but that's it sitting in front of our corporate headquarters right now. So this is the new floor plan over at Public Health. You'll have copies of this, I'm assuming, so you'll be able to see, there are actually five dental operatories in there. So we can actually move to trying to draw more dentists and more staff into the program. Contegra has, I have 19 dentists that work for me. We have a great program that can attract and offers pretty darn good benefits to those doctors and their staff. So it works very well for us, and we'd like to be part of Randolph County.
Are all of these, your employees, all of them, I mean?
No, we're not, we, all you have left at Randolph County Health Department is Brittany McGee, who is your hygienist, and Yacenia, who works at the front desk. They have agreed to move over to be Contegra employees, and we want them.
But all the dentists here, are they, they're your employees?
Pardon?
The dentists that are working here?
Right now, there is no dentist working there.
When Contegra comes into the Health Department, yes, they will all be Contegra employees.
Yeah, they will be our employees.
They'll all be your employees.
Matter of fact, yeah. And before we even do that, we're actually going to be bringing one of our doctors over basically February 1st, if everything goes through, to start working a couple of days a week. We haven't seen any patients at this site since May, so there's, we have to try and rebuild everything, and we figured that by bringing Dr. Works over from Lexington...
That was my next question. What's a startup time?
We're hoping February 1st.
Yeah, we're, like Dr. Donigan said, we're working on an agreement. The agreement hopefully will be signed soon. Once we get the agreement in place, it will be just getting the logistics worked out, getting the data conversion happening, getting a power connection for the mobile dental unit so that it can be plugged in at night, transitioning staff, those kinds of things. So hopefully February 1st will be our go-live date. The staff that we have are still in our department, so they're already doing some preliminary work, so hopefully that February 1 date will...
To try and draw some of those patients back who just disappeared through the time when you lose May and there's nobody there, they go elsewhere. So we want to draw them back.
Hope you have anything you want to add?
No, I mean, I think it's exciting, given the, given all the challenges that we faced, and we keep getting feedback from everywhere talking about what a challenge transportation is. So to hear that the mobile unit will be going to the schools and providing this many services to the students in the schools that otherwise would not be able to get those services, they would not. So I mean, I think, I think that's very good news. I think it's exciting, and I think it will definitely, you know, help our, help our children across our county to be better students when they have healthier teeth and gums.
Yeah, Hal and I were talking not long ago about our dental, dental care, and how if you've ever had a toothache as an adult, that's some of the worst pain that you can have, and it's hard to tackle it until the infection's gone. So the thought of kids sitting in a classroom or at home with their teeth needing dental care, it's just important and it's needed. My job prior to coming to the Health Department was with the Head Start Program, and unfortunately, there were a lot of children that did not get good dental care, and their teeth were, it was pitiful to see the teeth that some of these children have. So I think this partnership is going to bring good things to Randolph County, and probably going to see more children than we've ever been able to see.
So it's just for children, and is there a age, an age?
Zero to, zero to 18. It will be zero to 18, but the, do you want me to talk about Mercy?
You can, if you want. Wait, let me, let me say something right away, is that the numbers haven't changed much in all the time I've been involved in public health dentistry in 25 years. 50 to 60 million hours of school lost annually due to oral decay. And in our, in our mobile units that go out now, we actually use teledentistry. We have little mouthwatch cameras that are cordless, that they can take a photograph in the mouth and send that photograph via the internet to our doctors at the brick-and-mortar site. And I get probably six to eight daily with those three mobile units of kids that are swollen, teeth are rotted off to the gum line, and we have to find a way to reach those kids. We don't have that luxury of always waiting for them to come to us, so this is an easy way for us to get to them.
What I was going to add is, our clinic has always served children ages zero to 18. We would occasionally see some clients that were adults that were in an emergency situation to keep them out of the emergency department. The goal is for, Contegra is, will actually be assuming Mercy Family Medical in March. So the children will come to the Health Department at Contegra, and then adults needing services will go to Mercy, which will be Contegra in March.
So we will actually see all ages. With sliding fee scale, we will see insured, uninsured, and Medicaid population. In between the two sites, we'll have about, when the construction is done, and what is at Mercy, we will have 13 dental chairs devoted to public health in the city of Ashboro.
I was just like, so like for, really, I guess for parents, you know, and citizens that are going to be affected by these services in a positive way. So like logistically, since you're already doing this in some of our neighboring counties and peer counties, what does that look like on the ground at ABC Elementary? So you pull up, and everybody comes out, or is there predetermined group?
We have, we have a public health hygienist, her name is Kelly Cook in this area, and she will actually get stuff out to the schools in advance. Usually stuff goes out to the parents because they have to fill out a health history, a consent form, and once that is back, then we schedule based on the number of consents that are back, how long we will be there. Because if your son or daughter's there, they don't, and they're already seeing a dentist, we don't want to take them away from the local dentist. We want kids who wouldn't come to the dentist otherwise.
Not have dentist at all.
Yeah.
They don't have a dental hall. That was one of the follow-up questions, was the consent piece. So that's already done before you pull up?
Oh, yeah.
And then so, and you're doing a cleaning and a screening and everything, and you find a cavity, then?
We do all preventive services, and they take nine photographs, x-rays, according to the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry guidelines. Then those are sent to a dentist off-site, which allows that dentist to stay in clinic seeing other patients. Then the hygienists, who are all public health hygienists, can record, they can't diagnose, state law. They can note as a condition things that they see as a problem. And I can tell you, after doing dentistry, I've been doing dentistry almost 40 years, those hygienists know what a cavity looks like, and they mark it down, and then I go in on that. I can look all of that up, and Dr. Works, Works over in Lexington. So even when Brittany is on the bus here, she can sit over in Lexington and say, I need to see this child Tuesday, or I need to see them Thursday. And then we have navigators that actually work to contact the parent. And the nice part of the photographs is that sometimes you'll have the parents will say, it's just a baby tooth. They haven't looked in their child's mouth, and usually then the navigator will actually send a photograph to the parent if they'll allow it. Usually then that gets the parent to bring the child in.
And then you're able to literally feel the cavity on the same?
We won't feel it on the bus.
Well, okay. Do you need to go to the Health Department for that?
And we, yeah, we'll bring him into the Health Department, and we will have a dentist there, starting immediately at two days a week and maybe more than that, depending on needs, till we build it up. And we're still trying to recruit for a full-time dentist and other staff right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the Historic Courthouse Museum, Paxton.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Approximately a year ago, you were presented a feasibility study for a museum on the first floor of this building, along with a preliminary design for elevator addition on the east side. At that time, you awarded a contract to Hobbs Architects to continue with the design. They've now completed the construction documents and are prepared to put the project out for bid. Tonight, we have architects Grim Hobbs and Siobhan Moore here, and Siobhan's going to present the final design and give you an updated cost estimate and proposed schedule. And with that, I'll turn it over to Siobhan.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm just getting settled. So thank you all for allowing us to come before you this evening. Like Paxton said, my name is Siobhan Moore. I'm an architect and principal with Hobbs Architects in Pittsboro. And we're here tonight to provide an update on the Randolph County Historic Courthouse Museum renovation and elevator addition. The name's gotten a little longer over the past year. When we were last here before you, we had completed the design study, as Paxton said, and tonight, we're, we're, before you, having completed the design phases. And we are seeking your approval or authorization to go out to bid. And I will provide an overview of the project scope, show you some imagery from our project set, and provide the updated construction cost estimate and a proposed schedule. But first, I'll just do a brief reminder of the project scope. So as part of converting the first floor of this historic courthouse into a museum, a number of other issues kind of arose. And so we were tasked with a number of things to, one, improve the accessibility to and from the building, improve safe egress from the building, replacement of outdated building systems, and then to do something to address water intrusion in the basement. So to improve accessibility, we are removing the existing elevator that's behind you, that existing rear stair, and the exterior lift that's on the outside of the building on the west side. We're replacing them with an elevator lobby and, in addition, just over here to the east side. You'd actually access it from this floor, right through that window over there, which will be a door. The elevator addition will be an accessible route that connects the accessible parking at the rear of the building to each of the floors in the building. And then it will also be powered by an emergency generator, so it'll provide an emergency means of egress that is accessible as well. That is something that, that is challenging about this building currently. To improve safety in the building, the rear stairs are going to be replaced by a more gracious, historically appropriate-looking, code-compliant exit stair. And then the front main entrance will be modified so that that first step coming out of the front doors of the building, that will be infilled, so there will not be a tripping hazard there, and an additional stair added where the rest of the stairs are. So that should be more safe than it is currently. And we are adding additional railings to the, the stair at the back of the building and to the west side, to make, to provide a more safe condition than currently. The project will also include a replacement of the building's boiler heating system and window AC units that currently provide heat and cooling on the first floor and basement. Then we are also replacing, as part of this building's scope, this is new since the last time we were before you, we are replacing the attic unit that currently heats and cools this floor. And then to address the ongoing water intrusion issues in the basement, we are providing new drainage inlets. We're tying in the building's existing downspouts into the existing stormwater system. That system is currently damaged, and we're not exactly sure the entirety of the scope of damage below grade, so part of this project will be for the contractor to explore a bit and try to understand exactly what's happening below grade, and then repair that, and properly tie everything in. So with that, I'll go through the building plans briefly. This is the basement plan, and you'll kind of see there are two areas where the majority of work is happening. It's toward the rear of the building, where we're replacing the stair, and then also to the east of the building, the right side of the plans, where we're adding the elevator addition. There's also some miscellaneous work on each floor, but that's the primary work of the project. In the basement, all along the perimeter of the exterior where we can reach it, we are proposing that there be an excavation of the, of the grade around the building to then apply a below-grade waterproofing. That's another proposed solution to the water in the basement that's currently coming into the basement. And then on the first floor, where the museum will go, our scope of work has not been to include the exhibits. That will be work of an exhibit designer. But what we are tasked with is making sure that people can adequately walk and access the various spaces of the museum. So in replacing the stair at the rear of the building, we've had to close off some of the existing openings that are in the way of what will be a code-compliant stair that is larger than the current stair you have. So we had to think about how people, rethink how people will access the bathrooms on the first floor. So there is a, a new route to those bathrooms. There will be a small office area that will be off to the side of those restrooms. And then everywhere else on the first floor is reserved for exhibits. And then on the second floor, you'll see, again, on the second floor, there's very minimal changes being made. The rear stair and then the elevator addition will be happening there, to the side. And then here, as we looked into the addition, the replacement of the current attic HVAC unit, we heard a lot of concerns about access for that unit if it were to go back up into the attic. So we're actually proposing that the space at the back of the, at the front of the mezzanine be expanded toward the back of the courthouse to accommodate the new HVAC unit. That means then we had to come up with a new way of accessing the attic, because that's currently your attic access ladder. So while expanding that space will accommodate the new unit, we also have been investigating how do we access the attic in a better way. So some additional scope that's currently in the project is improving the attic access through a roof hatch that'll be in the ceiling of the stair back here, and then some additional stairs to access the various levels of the attic. So also, in the time since we had last been before you, we have gone before the Randolph County Historic Landmark Preservation Commission, and we were awarded their Certificate of Appropriateness. And I will show you some imagery that we shared with them. So if, in looking at the courthouse from the front, from Moore Street, this is the current condition of the courthouse. We have a rendering showing the new addition. So from the front of the building, we took a lot of care to use the same language, the same architectural language of the existing building. We have a rusticated masonry base. We have inset brick panels to mimic the, the window openings on the building. And then we have a cornice that is meant to mimic the, the simplified cornice that's at the back of the building. Now that is mainly the elevator tower itself that you see in this image. And then from the back, where this will now be the primary accessible entrance to the building, there's accessible parking right there. We'll be removing the existing fire escape, and we'll be adding the elevator tower and an elevator lobby connector. And that uses some more, some more modern language. It's a lot of vision glass when you're in it. You'll have good vision of the historical building that you're adjacent to, and it also meets the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation that call for the addition to a historic building to differentiate from the historic building. So this language that we use was reviewed by the Preservation Commission and approved to move forward.
Is that, is that the only interest then for handicap?
That will be the primary interest for, entrance for handicap access. So there was another project done a, a while back to create a pathway from Moore Street down to the rear of the building, and that's accessible too. So if you park along Moore Street, there is some current handicap parking up there. You can access the back there, but the easiest accessibility to the building will be this rear parking here, and that you'll be able to come right out of that parking and into the elevator lobby. And then right up through the elevator to each floor. And so what we've done, now that our documents are complete, we can get a really full picture of the, the project costs. I'm gonna turn to my page for my notes. So the estimated base bid construction cost is now 2.5, roughly 2.56 million. Now that base bid estimate is not the entirety of the project. What we've done is tried to identify some pieces of the project that can be separated out into what we call bid alternates, and I'll go through those with you. But it does include the scope of work that's necessary, the scope of work that has to happen, by and large, is part of this number. And the last time we met with you, we had a construction cost estimate of roughly $2 million, so there has been an increase, but we have had a, a good amount of added scope. So things that weren't anticipated when we did the study a year ago. And I'll go through some of those things, too.
What's the timeline on this, then?
The timeline for construction? I'll get to that, too. I have a whole outline of a schedule for you, too. Okay, so I do want to apologize on this particular exhibit, that construction cost is wrong. That should say $2,563,294. And so it does represent an increase from when we last estimated the project last spring of about 9%. But in that time, we have added a generator to the building for, to be able to use the elevator as an accessible means of egress. That elevator lobby has to be rated construction and fire-rated glazing. The cost has gone pretty high. The additional site work, where we're tying in the downspouts, the existing downspouts into the stormwater system, that is a new scope to the project that we didn't, we didn't know needed to be corrected until the county did some exploratory work to see that it was damaged. We've added a new HVAC unit to the attic. That is not in the base bid cost. That is a separate cost and an alternate, and I'll walk you through that. We are also now bringing a new electrical service to the building. That is new since we last did the study. So here is a list of the proposed bid alternates, where we've taken some pieces of the project and put them into what we call bid alternates, so that on bid day, you will get a number for each of these line items, and it will allow the county flexibility to, within your budget, get some amount of scope. So we do this, especially now as prices are increasing and it gets incredibly challenging to identify exactly what will fit into your budget. This represents roughly $500,000 worth of, of scope that the contractor will price out Included in that are the waterproofing and foundation drainage, repairs to the south entrance steps and the north and west railings, new painting, new flooring, new stair finishes. Those aren't necessary, but they'd be desired. Exterior painting with lead abatement. There's a lot of peeling paint on the exterior of the building. This is meant to, to encapsulate all of that repainting. Owner-preferred door hardware, mezzanine work, work in the mezzanine for the HVAC equipment room, and then the attic HVAC replacement. And this exhibit shows, everything in the, the green box is new scoped to the project since we last met. And so with a projected construction cross for the base bid of being about 2.5 million, the added base, or, the added alternates increased the cost then to little over $3 And then this slide shows how that then, that's the construction cost, those are the bid day costs that we've been talking about. The overall project cost, we've taken into account a recommended contingency of 10% that the county, we would recommend, hold. We're also accounting for what could happen in the next few months with costs. It may go up, it may not, hopefully not. We've included some estimated exhibit cost for the museum, and then design fees for the renovation. And so with the, with all of this included, the, the estimated overall project cost of the base bid is two, or, sorry, 3.44 million, and then the total estimated project cost, including alternates, is 3.9 million.
Do we have any clawbacks?
I'm sorry?
If deliveries aren't on time?
Right, right. So we are trying to think about that, and how do we accommodate that in the construction schedule? So I'll talk a little bit about that, too. When we last met with you, the estimated project cost was 2.88 million. So we have seen cost increases, but we've also added a lot of scope to the project. So it's, you're seeing both. You're seeing added scope and you're seeing some inflation, too. Okay. So then the next slide is where we go through what we see as a very probable schedule moving forward. So tonight, we're here before you for the authorization to bid. Paxton is also going to be talking about a pre-qualification matrix, which would be advertised, if approved, would be advertised tomorrow. There's a number of contractors that we, in particular, want to make sure know about this project, but there would be a publicly open pre-authorization process where the contractors put together proposals not based on our drawings, it's not cost-based, it's qualifications-based. And that allows us to, to try to narrow down the contractor, the, the general contractors that will be bidding the project. This is a very specialized project with very, it's gonna be tricky. It's little pieces of, of renovations all through the building. Certain general contractors are much more skilled at renovation projects like this. So we're going to encourage as many contractors as we can to go through the pre-qualification process. There's a required review period of two months, and so from tomorrow, if approved, it'd be two months before we could then go out to bid, technically, to notify those pre-qualified, pre-qualified bidders that the project was bidding. The bidding phase would be another month. We would open bids early March. We would then present those to you for your approval on, at your March 6 meeting. And then the, the construction contract phase begins, the building permitting begins, and that's about a month and each. So we would anticipate that building would actually begin in early May. It might go a little faster than that. Sometimes that contracting phase can really be sped up, sometimes the building permitting can go faster, but we think it's, it's safe to assume a month for each. And then we anticipate a construction schedule of 12 months. This is not what we would say in any typical time. We would think in a typical time, this would be more along the lines of nine months for this construction scope, but given the lead times for particular items, we would recommend, assuming a 12-month schedule. Elevators in particular, they have a six-month lead time right now. So, and we just confirmed that with a representative today. So we would want to make sure that we're accommodating that and expecting that. So I think we're building in some flexibility time there into the construction timeframe by having a 12-month process.
Most of these additions are due to building codes, finding other issues in the building. We didn't add things that we, well, we'd like to have there.
Most of these additions are due to building codes, finding other issues in the building. We didn't add things that we, well, we'd like to have this, or we'd like to have that.
The only thing I can think of along those lines is really the replacement of the HVAC in the attic currently, which, from what we've heard, is desperately needed, too. So it's not, there's nothing that's like, oh, we'd really like to have this very nice-looking pedestal or something like that. That's not really included in the project. We've actually tried very hard to contain the scope as much as we can, knowing the impact of cost increases.
What would be the impact to the building use while the construction renovation is going on?
So there will be a period of time when it is not able to be utilized for, not able to be occupied. So as soon as those stairs are removed in the back of the building, you'll no longer be able to egress the building in the same manner, and the travel distances will be too long. So for the timeframe that the stair is removed, until the timeframe it's replaced and approved by the building inspector for occupancy, we're not going to be able to occupy this building in the same way we do now. So we do anticipate that there's a time period there where the commissioner meetings may have to be relocated. What we recommend doing is trying to, well, we would certainly work with the contractor to postpone that until we know that these activities are going to start. You know, there's a timeframe where we will be receiving submittals from the contractor to approve that they're using the correct materials. So certainly during that timeframe, don't take out the stair until they're really ready to, you know, move forward. We try to see what the contractor's plans for demolition and replacement are, and maximize the timeframe that you can remain in the building.
The replacement of the air conditioning unit?
Yes, sir.
Is it a standard unit, or it will be special order, or what?
So we are working to try to, it's a publicly bid project, so we have to give three options. So, and all the options should be something that are not special order. They have to be by different manufacturers, but they will have to fit within that space, so it can't just be any unit. So I know our engineers have been working to identify various manufacturers.
I know there are shortages of air conditioning units.
That can be an issue.
In their buildings that are waiting occupancy or certificates because they're awaiting on air conditioning units, air handling units, and not just a month or two, but, you know, five to six months.
Many months, yes. So that is another reason why the HVAC equipment and the elevator, we anticipate to be the longest lead times, including the smaller units in the first floor. So all of the existing radiators will be removed and replaced with small VRF units with more historically appropriate-looking covers. And we anticipate that, at any point, any of that, any factory manufactured goods right now are seeing the longest delays, but particularly HVAC and elevator equipment. We hope that that 12-month time period that we're putting in here is adequate for all of that. We would certainly encourage the contractors to submit those long lead time items as quickly as they can. Do you have any questions?
Questions, comments?
So if you're okay with us moving forward, we'd ask that you authorize us to go ahead and go out for bid, and that you approve that selection matrix that I presented to you. This is just a standard document that the state uses, so it's nothing that we came up with. It's just a state template.
Is that sort of a boilerplate? That thing's about 11 pages long.
Yeah, it's boilerplate. It just has, like, certain criteria that they fill out, and then they grade, and you have to get, like, a score of 80, I think, to make the cut for bidding.
In order to be qualified to bid on this project.
Yeah, so we'll still be competitively bid, but if there's someone that, you know, doesn't score well, this would give us a little bit more safety.
Call them out.
Yeah.
What's the place of the board?
Mr. Chairman, it's a little more expensive than what had been anticipated, but a lot of it is necessary to continue to occupy the building if we're going to utilize it, and we've got to maintain it. And I don't know that we've got a lot of choice to do that. So I would make a motion that we authorize a historic museum project to be advertised for bids and approve the prequalifying document for use in the selection process.
We have a second to the motion.
I'll take that motion.
Further discussion or questions, comments among the board, folks presenting here tonight? Okay, hearing none. Those in favor of the motion to authorize project to be advertised for bids and the supporting document to qualify the bidders? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no?
No.
And it is approved. 4 to 1, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now is the time for our continued public hearings for the redistricting or realignment of our fire department agreements. Amy?
Good evening. Well, as you know, many of our current fire protection tax districts still have a 15-cent cap. You have moved forward on eliminating that cap for several districts. This is our third group. At your October meeting, you officially considered moving forward to abolish the current capped county service districts for fire protection for Bennett, Seagrove, Southwest, and Yula, and replacing them with districts that do not have that limit on taxation. The proposed new service districts contain the exact same properties that are currently contained in the capped districts that they would be replacing. In October, for each district, you determined that the current cap on taxation has rendered or will soon render the district obsolete for providing the necessary protection for citizens in the area. You also considered the resident population and population density of the proposed district, the appraised value of property subject to taxation in the proposed district, the present tax rates of the county, and any cities or special districts in which that district or any portion thereof is located, and the ability of that district to sustain taxes necessary to provide the services that are planned. After you considered those matters, you passed resolutions, respectively, declaring your intent to create the districts and calling for a report to be prepared. The report was, it was the same report that I actually presented to you at that meeting. It had already been prepared for you, and it was kept in the office of the clerk to the board for anyone who wanted to see it. Your resolution also set public hearings on the creation, on the abolishment of the current districts and the creation of the new districts for tonight, and notice of the public hearing was mailed in accordance with statute and published in accordance with statute. So at this meeting, you will need to hold public hearings on the abolishment of the current district and the creation of a new uncapped district for Bennett, Seagrove, Southwest, and Yula. And at the conclusion of those hearings, if you find that the current district is insufficient to provide the required protection, and that there is a demonstrable need for providing fire protection services in the districts, that it is impossible or impracticable to provide fire protection services on a countywide basis, that it is economically feasible to provide these services in the proposed districts without unreasonable or burdensome annual tax levies, and that there is a demonstrable demand for fire protection services in these districts, then you can pass the resolutions in your packet that abolish the current capped district and create the new uncapped districts. And these changes would go into effect July 1, 2023.
And we say this is not a tax increase.
It is not. It simply gives the ability for these departments to ask for taxes in excess of 15 cents, but any request would still come before this board, as they always do, in the same manner.
The process for a tax increase is the same as it's always been, and only the elected board of commissioners has the authority to change that tax.
That is correct.
And also, the $1.50 is not all for fire tax.
No.
And that is stated in your narrative that it is, in the resolution, that all tax rates, it is, that all tax rates in the district taken together.
Could not exceed that.
Cannot exceed the $1.50.
That is correct.
And for any public, before we have the public hearing, that, any change in that rate has to be done by this board following a public hearing for that tax district.
Right, in the same manner that we've always done that. That happens during the budget process, correct.
All right. So tonight, we're considering Bennett, Seagrove, Southwest, and Yula fire departments.
Correct.
Anybody have a question, Amy, before we start the public hearings?
I don't have any questions, no. But they're all in my district.
I don't know that we did that on purpose, Commissioner McDowell. I think we just...
We didn't make the choice, the fire departments did.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right.
They're all in my district, and I'd like to make the motion.
We've got to have the public hearing.
Oh, okay, we've got to have them.
On each one. Is there anyone here tonight from the Bennett Fire Department that wishes to speak to the change? Anyone from Bennett? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and now we'll have the board for any motion on the change. And that would refer to the resolution that is in your agenda packet. That's a resolution abolishing the current 15-cent cap to Bennett Fire Protection County Service District and creating a new service district without the cap. Now, do I have a motion?
Do you need me to re-read that?
Yeah, read the C1 motion, and then we can use that.
Okay. And I make the motion to approve a resolution abolishing the current 15-cent cap for Bennett Fire Protection County Service District and creating a new service district without the cap.
Is there a second to the motion? Second. Further discussion or questions? Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it is approved. Next one is the Seagrove Fire Department. Is there anyone here, we opened the public hearings, is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak to the Seagrove Fire District change? Any? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
And I'll make the motion to approve a resolution abolishing the current 15-cent capped Seagrove Fire Protection County Service District and creating a new service district without the cap.
Okay. Further discussion? Those in favor, let, say aye?
Pardon?
Second.
Second.
Okay, second.
Any other discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and Seagrove is approved. Southwest, anyone here tonight from Southwest Fire District? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and you can make a motion.
I make a motion to approve a resolution abolishing the current 15-cent capped Southwest Fire Protection County Service District and creating a new service district without the cap.
We have a second.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it is approved. Last one, Yula. We'll open the public hearing for the Yula Fire District. Anyone here tonight who wishes to speak on the Yula request? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
And I make a motion to approve a resolution abolishing the current 15-cent cap to Yula Fire Protection County Service District and creating a new service district without the cap.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Thank all of you, and thank you for your comments tonight. I know when the 10,000, it wasn't a surprise, they knew it, but Senator Craven was very instrumental. Of course, it was state funds that he had sent through the county, I think you are aware of that, but certainly for a good cause with our fire departments, and I know you can use it, but thank you for acknowledging that to our board tonight also. Okay. Now we will move to our next agenda item, which is the Midstate Trailer Economic Development Project, Crystal Geddes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you about the support of a building reuse grant for Midstate Trailers. So Midstate Trailers was recently acquired, and they're located in Denton in Randolph County. They're at 6542 North Carolina Highway 47, just inside Randolph County. They were acquired back in the spring by ITZ NC Incorporated, who will continue to do business as Midstate Trailers. ITZ Incorporated owns the operating assets while their real estate arm, BWR NC LLC, will own the real estate. Both these companies are owned by Thomas Dish. Denton is the company's first location in North Carolina for ITZ Incorporated, who took over the manufacturing of trailers, and they're basically the gooseneck trailers that you see, from Midstate, and will be adding their own Handy Ramp line to their production. Handy Ramp manufactures handicap ramps, as well as industrial material ramps, which will require adding an approximately 26,000 square feet to their current facility in Denton to accommodate the increased demand for both their handicap ramps and their wide range of material handling ramps. Handy Ramp has been headquartered in Kenosha, Wisconsin since 1958. Handy Ramp manufactures industrial ramp products, cargo van ramps, pet and yard ramps, accessibility products, and home and safety products. The company also created a nonprofit organization called Handy Ramp Foundation that works to provide funding to assist qualified candidates in their purchase of accessibility equipment. The company anticipates investing $527,829 in real property, and will be creating 19 new jobs paying an average wage of $46,967. This is well above our current average wage for Randolph County. The company is seeking and qualifies for a building reuse grant in the amount of $100,000. There's no anticipated match for Randolph County, however, the company's investment certainly covers the traditional 5% that used to be required. The EDC believes that ITZ NC Incorporated, or Midstate Trailers, as they will continue doing business, is an exceptional economic development project for the county by generating a significant investment in a building addition and repairs and upgrades, increasing the value of the property, and resulting in the creation, and I must make this correction, please, yours says 129, but it is 19 new jobs. The EDC is requesting that the county support this project and approve the resolution to support the building reuse grant for Midstate Trailers. The county would be the applicant on their behalf, and it's basically a pass-through grant that will go directly to the company as they meet their performance measures.
But, Crystal?
Yes, sir.
It says Denton, that's just a Denton address.
That's just the Denton address. It is in Randolph County. Yes, sir.
Terrify that also.
Mr. Chairman, that is in Randolph County.
Yes, sir.
It will be a very valuable asset to have there.
You're getting a lot of attention tonight. It's exploding in Southwest Randolph County, I don't know. Any questions, Crystal?
So there's no match. The only thing, the county would administer their grant.
No, sir, there's no match for the county.
And we would take a deed of trust or some other document.
Yes, sir.
Because we would be responsible if, to the state, should...
Correct, and they have, they have multiple options on how we can do that, but yes, they're, they're reviewing which option they want to go with, but there will be a deed of trust or a guarantee, or they can wait until the end of the project to be funded.
So it's a very limited risk for the county.
Yes.
The, the other thing, I, create me if I'm wrong, it has facilities in five states, so it's not a small.
Yes, it's a very well-established company, has multiple companies. Um, this gentleman has been very successful in creating, very generous in his foundation as well.
I wish I'd have known this several years ago, I had to have a handicap map built. It was not cheap.
No. And, and I would, they, they've retained very large contracts with, with organizations everywhere, municipal buildings, museums, that they provide handicap equipment for, and railing for them, but in addition to that, I encourage you to go down there and take a look at their yard, because now they have those very large orange material handling ramps that go hook onto the back of the docks.
All right.
Still have a lot of military type of contracts?
They may, I'm not sure if they have military contracts or not.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Thank you.
Will? Pardon? Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Oh, yes. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak to this request? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and now have action from the board.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution authorizing the county of Randolph to apply a building reuse grant for Midstate Trailers Economic Development Project.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Thank you, Crystal. Next item is the reappraisal orders, Deborah.
The final step in the process leading up to the two thousand twenty-three reappraisal is the adoption of the orders of adopting the true value and present use schedule standards and rules pursuant to General Statute one oh five three seventeen. These documents was presented to the board on October third. Our required notices have been published, and the public hearing was held on November the seventh, at the board's November seventh meeting. Following the adoption of the orders, a notice will be published as prescribed by GS one oh five three seventeen on December seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth, stating that the orders were duly adopted and are available for public inspection in the office of the county assessor's office. The notice will also state that any property owner who asserts that these scheduled standards or rules are invalid may appeal them to the Property Tax Commission within thirty days from the December seventh, two thousand twenty-two date. I respectfully request that the board adopt the following schedules. An order concerning the present use schedules, values, standards, and rules to be used in appraising real property at its true value for the two thousand twenty-three reappraisal. An order concerning the market value, schedules, standards, I can't even read, market value, schedules of value, standards and rules to be used in appraising real property at its market value for January first, two thousand twenty-three reappraisal. So you have those schedules before you, and I.
Have y'all had any questions in the Tax Department much about?
No, just, just the general, you know, just general information, nothing about the schedules themselves. And these, uh, the schedule has been available for public viewing since October, and I think we've had one person to come in and look, we've had one person to come in and look at it. It's also been online, I do not know if anybody's, how many's looked at it online, but it has been on the county website.
All right. Any other questions, Deborah? Well, we have two motions, two items here, one has to do with the present use schedule of values, and the other has to do with the market value, the schedule of values, the true market value. So we'll take those individually. Have a motion on the first item?
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve an order concerning the present use value, schedules, standards, and rules to be used in appraising real property as the present's use value for the January first, two thousand twenty-three revaluation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is, I mean, I know that present use values are, a lot of that's in the farming.
Yeah.
Yes.
Y'all had that at cooperative, Stingerian.
Uh, I'm on the, the present use value commission, I guess.
Advisory board.
Advisory board, there you go, that comes up there. They met back in, uh, we'll meet again probably in February, March, I think, to come up with,
That's for the.
For the next year.
Next one, yeah.
So this year's already been determined. Uh, and there's, there'll be some, probably some potential updates there, and they're looking at different ways that other states can use that, because what's used now is sometimes used rents.
Cash rents.
Cash rents, and.
And with the cash rate.
With the ca, with the, um, economy as it is, there were several farms that they didn't plant, so there was no cash rents, and so there's some, looking for a better way to do that.
I, I've had a couple of questions, I'm going back to earlier this evening. It still has to produce a minimum level of income?
For present use, yes.
For present use? Is, what is that now?
It, for, uh, open agricultural land, it basically works out to a hundred dollars an acre.
A hundred dollars an acre.
That's gross. It produced by the, the land, it's not what, if a farmer rents their property, it's not the rent they get, but the actual production from the land.
And it's minimum ten acres, not counting the home site?
That's correct. For open land, it's ten acres, agriculture, five, and for forestry, twenty.
Twenty.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it is approved. The next one is the order concerning the true market value schedule of values. Do I have a motion?
I'll, I'll do that one too, I, I'm, um, make a motion to approve the order consenting the true va, market value, schedule of values and standards and rules to be used in appraising real property at its true market value for the January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three evaluation, revaluation.
Have a second?
I'll second that as well.
Further discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good job. Okay, our next item is the opioid update, Jennifer. Thanks for your patience. Leah, you're coming up, there we go.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to provide you an update with our, on our progress in preparing the funding application package regarding the opioid settlement funds. We began this process back in July with the following goals in mind. One, ensure the use of evidence-based programs and resources to address substance use disorders, but specifically opioid use disorder. Two, build the infrastructure to measure the impact of programs in Randolph County. And three, strengthen the community partnerships to improve access to care related to substance use disorders. In October of two thousand twenty-two, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners assigned a staff member to assist us in the preparation and implementation of this funding package. Leah Gerhart has a master's degree in public affairs and brings experience in developing and implementing large funding packages for local government. She has assisted in streamlining language and document flow alignment with North Carolina Memorandum of Agreement and legislation, and assuring all county reporting requirements are included. As a result, the document is nearing completion, we're very excited about that. Additionally, Mrs. Gerhart has met with Randolph County's attorney, finance director, contracts purchasing agent, and IT to assure all county policies auditing requirements are considered in this process. Per General Statute, a record retention of five years of all opioid, opioid settlement-related documents is required. Mrs. Gerhart and I have met with IT to develop a system to retain all required documents for the eighteen-year span of settlement fund dispersal, you know, barring financial stuff, you all have very special systems that you all retain your documents. But this would include things like applications, grantee reports, data collection, and those types of documents, we'll have to retain those for at least five years beyond the period. An executive committee will be appointed to evaluate funding applications based on a standardized scoring matrix. Using a standardized scoring matrix will ensure a fair and transparent process of evaluating proposals. Through careful review of each proposal for alignment with North Carolina opioid settlement, MOA strategies, and requirements, the committee will be able to make recommendations to this board for consideration of funding. And I did invite Mrs. Gerhart to join us this evening to provide a couple of key technical aspects that she's incorporated into the funding proposal, just to make sure that she can answer any questions. There have been some very recent updates to the MOA, as recent as just before Thanksgiving, so we've been very fortunate that she's been available to really pay close attention as those updates have been released and, and refine our language to alignment, to make sure it was correct. So if, if I may, I'd like to offer her an opportunity to give you a few technical pieces.
Hello, everybody, thank you for allowing me to speak before you today, Commissioners. Yes, as far as technical changes, as early or as recent as November twenty-first, there was a supplement, or a memo essentially, to counties urging them to review their spending authorization reports. Spending authorization reports are required to be sent to the NC core engine, or the core NC engine managed by UNC and DOJ partners, as well as the Health and Human Services, to evaluate whether counties are appropriately moving forward with their spending plans, and that's whether they choose option A or option B, and the strategy or strategies they intend to spend their funds on. Several counties were told that they needed to amend their spending authorization reports for being out of compliance with the MOA. So DOJ really encourages counties to review those spending authorization reports and all strategic planning that has led to those reports, in order to make sure that they are fully consistent with the MOA. Auditing has been an evolving arena for these particular funds, they are not included in the state or federal financial assistance funds that counties typically receive and manage, they will have separate auditing requirements that actually may evolve as time goes on. As recently as September, those auditing requirements were amended, or actually added to from DOJ with the acknowledgement that these funds are not state assistance, but will still be subject to the State Fiscal Budget and Control Act, as well as any other auditing requirements that the advisory committee comes together to form in that time. And any auditing requirements that they put out as a supplement will be consistent with the MOA and will become part of the MOA itself. As Jennifer said too, we took the RFP through your IT department, through contracts, procurement, legal, even as early, tomorrow, I will actually be meeting with NCACC's risk management team to establish minimum thresholds for insurance coverage and to ensure that those are, you know, across the board what is necessary for every nonprofit or private organization that could be receiving these funds. Ultimately, the DOJ, HHS, and all the team involved with the advisory committee for these funds encourages local governments to be strategic and thoughtful in the planning of the use of these funds, as you have eighteen years to spend them. In the FAQ, the Frequently Asked Questions Supplement to the MOA, the Memorandum of Agreement, there are several good reasons for local governments to wait until the two thousand twenty-three fiscal year or thereafter to spend such funds, not the least of which is that local governments should take some time to fully understand and follow the MOA before spending these funds. Thank you. Any questions, technical questions, Jennifer or myself?
I have two.
Yes, sir.
The Sand Hill Center representative, now, I would think that's going to be Commissioner Allen, but, and he's a commissioner, but he can serve on the committee.
We've discussed with Hal, Mr. Johnson, that it may be ideal to assure no conflict of interest, ideal to have a representative from the LME MCO that is not representative on, on the Board of Commissioners.
Ultimately, this board's going to make those decisions.
Yes, yes, sir, it's correct, yes.
And it'd probably be someone with a more technical background than me, uh, would be probably a better use, that's in, uh, you know, in that realm of world every day.
Yes.
So I, I think it'd be, they'd be much more familiar with the needs, along with the other folks that are included in that, in that list.
You'll find somebody, David?
Uh, we could get, we'll get Sand Hill's, can appoint somebody, uh, and it may be, you know, one of the other provider, maybe Son, Daymar, or somebody like that, but it'd be, that could be their representative.
Maybe somebody with Daymar, right in town.
Yeah, yeah.
And Leah is not a county employee, but she can be staff, uh, help to the committee.
Yes, sir, and it's the intention to, and it's been built into the RFP, the Request for Proposals, that technical, it would be technically reviewed as well, and any technicalities are at the discretion of the county to establish whether they fall into eligibility criteria. So myself and the team are available to review for technical, the things that would make these contracts or these funding packages ineligible for technicalities, and I think that's a great overview that myself and the team can provide, which it will automatically disqualify candidates who can't provide those technical answers in their proposal packages.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just, I just want to say that the opioid settlement comes with so many restrictions to it, and, and how you spend the money, it's, it's one of the most complicated programs I've, I've seen, and, and Jennifer said fair and transparent, and that's what these two ladies are, are working on right now, is a program so that Randolph County, when you get recommendations as a board of county commissioners, you know that there has been a fair, everyone's treated the same with all the different applications that are coming in, number one, and number two, they're going, the, the program is designed to meet all those complicated regulations that the federal government has put on this, in the state, has put on this money for the county to use over the next eighteen years. I can't commend them enough, and I, I just want to highlight the complexity of what they're working on, is going to pay dividends to Randolph County, and I know Darrell and, and Hope, and I believe David were on a Zoom call with the Association of County Commissioners a few months ago, where Randolph County, they wanted to use Randolph County as an, an example statewide, with the way we're processing these, the opioid settlement and how we intend to use that, and it's because of people like Jennifer and Leah, the opportunity that she provides, that, that we're able to do that. So I just wanted to say that, that's, th, this is such a crisis, the opioid, and this board was one of the first boards in North Carolina to initiate legal action back before it became popular to do that, and, and now the money's coming in, so I, I thank them for what they're doing in a highly complex environment.
And Will won't be involved in this process, but he will, when we're making our final decisions.
Yes.
But he's not involved in the process itself.
Um, well, Leah has consulted with Will quite extensively to make sure we're meeting his financial and auditing requirements, and so I'm sure Will has seen and heard our faces in our emails quite a bit, and, and he's probably, he's ready to tie it up too, but yes, he'll be, he's been a great resource for Leah as she's worked through some of those technical pieces.
Other questions, folks? Now, there, we, we need the motion, and this, it's, the, the members are very specific.
Yes.
The only one was the Sand Hill Center, I mean, we, we know who all these others are, but David will help us find or get us some.
We'll, we'll.
Come by for Sand Hill's to fill that slot, so.
I don't think we were asked.
When do we start working?
I apologize. We, um, when we started making some revisions when Leah came on board, we originally had a projected timeline of launching the funding package at, like, well, last Friday, but with those revisions and some of those updates from the DOJ in North Carolina, it, we anticipate this to be fully ready to go out for folks to start preparing applications at the very beginning of January.
But after tonight, you are official.
So I want to reiterate that DOJ and Nidhi Sachdev are Director of Strategic Health and Opioid Initiatives, in their review process, we are going to have a second review with them, and with their guidance. They've already said this RFP is gold standard, but there are a few parts to refine ultimately. That second review will be the catalyst to it going towards its next process of review inside the county administration.
After this motion is approved, we, we are, we have an established committee to start work once these other matters are clarified. work once these other matters are clarified.
I wasn't, I wasn't requesting any motions this evening. I apologize. I was just providing an update.
Well, our, our motion is to approve the formation of the Executive Committee of Opioid Settlement Funding.
Okay.
And appoint the Juvenile Day Reporting Center Director.
Okay.
DSS Director, Randolph County Emergency Management Chief, the Adult Day Reporting Center Director, Sand Hill Center Representative, Sheriff's Office Representative, the Assistant Health Director, and the Health Director as voting members, voting members of the committee and the county manager as an ex-officio member.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
So we, we are, you are formed and as far as, we're ready to go when somebody else gets ready, so. So Sheriff, Hal will get somebody from Sheriff and David will get somebody from Sand Hills and all these others. We know who they are. All right. Other questions?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion to establish the committee.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve the formation of the Executive Committee of Opioid Settlement and appoint the Juvenile Day Reporting Center Director, the Department of Social Services Director, the Randolph County Emergency Management Chief, the Adult Day Reporting Center Director, a Sand Hill Center Representative, a Sheriff's Office Representative, the Assistant Health Director, and the Health Director as voting members, and the County Manager as an ex-officio.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those no. So thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
We're just getting going. Okay. Veteran Services, Elizabeth?
I told Elizabeth, I, as the new Veteran Services Director, I wanted to put her on the commissioner's agenda so she could give you an update on a program she has. And I, she didn't know I was going to put her at the last of the agenda. So she got to see her first full county commissioners meeting.
We've had several references to biblical verses tonight, but the last shall be first.
Oh, yes. I want to thank you too for inviting me and the opportunity to share what our office has been working on. My team and I want to help our county's veterans alongside just VA benefits. And we have been working on a new project for our homeless and at-risk veterans. After collaborating with Krista Lowe from the Register of Deeds, we will be taking a portion of this space that the Veteran Service Office used to operate out of. That space will be utilized as a pantry where our veterans can come and get any necessities they may need. We are currently working on getting the remaining office furniture out so that we can begin stocking with the donated items such as non-perishable food, cleaning and toiletry items, blankets, and any other items that our veterans may be in need of. I would like to thank Robert Cross for maintenance. He has been a huge help with getting that space set up. And I'd also like to thank everyone who has called, emailed, brought donations by the office. We have had several local organizations and people extending offers to help with this mission. And the support that my staff and I have received to get this project going is truly amazing. We already network through local agencies and are excited that we can now offer something extra that is catered just for these veterans. Our goal is we would like to be open sometime next month with the holidays and the work that it's taken. It may be late next month, but that's our goal. Again, thank you for the opportunity for this project. Are there any questions?
So how are you liking your new job?
I love it.
Well, thank you for being there, Elizabeth, and.
Thank you.
We hear, continue to hear good things and, you know, we're here.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Everybody's been very supportive.
One of the statistics that sticks in my mind that I read that you presented somewhere was how many veterans are in Randolph County? About 8,000?
There's a little, it's about 8,500. I think it's went down a little bit because we've had some deaths within the past few months. But if you go to the surrounding counties, when COVID hit, we had a lot of the surrounding counties come at us because we continued to work. And so we estimated about 15,000.
So 15,000 along the borders of Randolph County and over 8,000 within the county itself. That's incredible.
Have, do we have suicide issues in the county?
There's always suicide issues with our veterans, unfortunately. I haven't heard of any here lately. I had had a couple that had to be taken into a VA inpatient facility due to being suicidal, but I have not gotten any updates on those situations.
Any other questions, Elizabeth? Thank you.
Well, thank you. You guys have a good evening.
Appreciate it. Next, next time I'll put you in the front of the.
Take care, yes. Our, our last item is to set the date for our planning retreat and Hal is recommending February the 23rd.
Every, every year we talk about how much is going on in Randolph County and the decisions that have to be made. 2023 is probably going to be an absolute critical year with infrastructure and opioids and, and all the other issues that are before the county commissioners. So this planning retreat, in addition to a lot of the special sessions that the commissioners will be having, is going to be a critical planning retreat and we'll have something to eat there. I promise. That was somebody. We normally started at 12, I think at 12. We'll, we'll have some, something to eat there.
All right.
22.
Does, Hal, do you have anything up?
I don't.
Any commissioner update?
Need to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. But do we have a motion then to set it for February 23rd?
Yes, so move.
We have a second?
Second.
Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and you'll let us, you'll send out a notice of time. Might start about 11:30. All right. Any commissioner have any report, anything to add tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recognize Mayor AC Hurley from Franklinville.
Yep.
I'm not sure where to admire you and admonish you for sitting here for three hours on those nice comfy chairs, so appreciate you being here.
I, I was going to, to recognize him and ask a question at the same time, he and Ross. The comment was made that Franklinville's library stays open on Sunday. Is that because it's in the city or what? I mean, is there, what was that process?
Yeah, some, some, I don't know when the, when, when it was a municipally operated library, they chose to do that and it's just stayed that way. The hours have adjusted. They used to be open only in the afternoons. The hours have been adjusted so they're open all day, but closed on Friday and Saturday. So their hours are Sunday and Thursday.
So they're open all day on Sunday, but close Friday and Saturday?
Yes.
Two to five on Sunday.
And nine to six, Monday through Thursday.
Okay. I, I, that's, that issue's come up multiple times. I, I know it, it's been a point for Allen for several years, but I've heard from other folks too, up in Arsenal, you know, why don't you open on Sunday? I, I don't want to sit at home and watch a ballgame. But I do think that's something that, that we, it needs to be brought back to us. Sure.
I, I don't disagree with Allen. You know, Allen's been a, a longtime library user and an advisor to the library area and he and Mary Joan, I think, are life members of the friends. And I don't disagree with him. You know, people think of us more as retail than government and, and they think we ought to be open like a Barnes and Noble is open. And I, I look into it from time to time with our existing staff and just can't make it work, but I will, you know, I'll look into it again and, and bring it back and see what we can come up with.
Okay, that'd be good. Is there any other business? I, I do want to say too, I mentioned at the start of our meeting tonight, this is our last meeting of 2022, so we won't be back in this, in this fashion till January of '23. And we certainly wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and we thank you for your participation throughout this year. Some of you, you never miss a meeting and you're here and contributing to this process and we thank you for it. Our guys from Sheriff's Department, you're loyal to us and good to have you here for our meetings as well. And certainly we, we grateful for getting through the year and we're optimistic as we start 2023 and all of you are part of that optimism because of your experience and, and contributions to what we do here in delivering county services to the citizens of Randolph County. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we might want to mention we got a meeting next week.
Yep.
So just kind of remind commissioners of that, I'm sure.
Yeah, we do.
Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday.
So just don't forget that. I'm, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.